And I'll start out by saying good afternoon and want to welcome everyone here to the November the 6th, 2023 zoning board of adjustments meeting. And need to establish that Corman is present, and it looks like there is. There is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven of us. All right. Item number two, I'd like to review and take any action related to the minutes of the regular meeting held on Monday, September.
11.
16th.
16th, 2023. And I'm seeing the October down there also. I was confused. We didn't do the, we didn't do the minutes last time, did we? Because we had an issue.
There were corrections.
Yes, corrections. That's right. That's right. That's right.
So it says Monday, September 11th.
Yeah, I think it was the 11th because I wasn't there.
9/11.
Yep.
We'll correct that on the agenda to September 11th, 2023. Is everyone taking time to review and look at the corrections? And I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
To, motion to approve, and a second to approve. The vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item number three, review and take act, any action related to the minute records of the regular meeting held on Monday, October the 2nd, 2023. Everyone had a chance to review the meetings from October the 2nd of 2023.
I have a couple of things.
Okay.
So I was present for the meeting, and then also every time that my name is in there, it's misspelled. But other than that, everything looked good.
How are they misspelling it?
Sir?
How are they misspelling it?
T E R R Y.
Ah, on the front it says T E R I.
You're looking at the 7 minutes?
Yeah, this is the September 11th minute. She wasn't even, or she was.
October didn't show that I was here. But in the minutes, deeper in there, it's misspelled. So anyway, I was here. I'm here.
Tell me, will I, Terry?
Yes, sir.
Anything else? Do you have your motion?
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
So the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Item number four, ZBA 23-29, 1910 South Concho Drive, single member district number one, Tommy Hebert, request for variance from section 501 of zoning ordinance to allow for a, to allow for a allow for a five to seven foot yard setback from the property line setback for 1910 South Concho Drive in a single family RS1 zoning district. Take off.
Good afternoon, ZBA members. Sherri Bailey, principal planner. As the chairperson indicated, this is ZBA 2329, 1910 South Concho Drive. It is in District One, Tommy Hebert's district. It's the Nazworthy neighborhood. And as he also indicated, this is a variance from section 501 dot A to allow for a five to seven front yard setback in lieu of the required 25 feet. And the reason I say five to seven, it actually depends on where you measure the property line from. There's a slight curve in the property line, so either one of those would suffice, and both of those meet the open structures. However, this property is not in the open structure, and therefore that's the reason for bringing it forward to you. We sent out 10 notifications. We received one in favor, and we had none that were opposed. This South Concho Drive is in fact a major collector, which out at the lake is an unusual situation, and it's a fairly large right of way out there. It's 90 feet of right of way, and the paving is about 40 foot wide. It varies just a little bit as you go down the road. It is off-center a little bit, which means there is more of an unpaved right of way, which is on what I would consider the right-hand side of the road than there is on the left. And as we've got listed, the requirement is for 70 foot of right of way and 48 foot of paving. In looking at this, the, analyzing it according to the ordinance, the very first statement on there is the special circumstances that are peculiar to the land or structure for this application is what we vary a lot or determine a lot as we go through all of the analysis of the area. And we believe that in this case, that has not been met, that in fact, the special circumstances that are unique to this piece of property have not been outlined. The applicant does believe that they have 23 feet from the property line to the garage. And then again, when I was out there, it was 23 to 25 feet, so it, it varies a little bit also. The applicant's home does sit closer to the right of way, closer than most of the homes out there. However, that is not an undue hardship when we are considering it for the variance. And there are other similar properties in the area that have added a carport and that have met the requirements. If the variance is granted, it would be subverting, we believe, the spirit of the ordinance by allowing something that is specifically prohibited by the ordinance and therefore is contrary to the public interest. And so we could not make that finding in looking at it also. So staff could not find a hardship or other overriding public interest that would warrant not applying the adopted ordinance standards on this piece of property. And so because of that, staff believes the application has not met the criteria for a variance, and therefore the request for a variance from 501 dot A of the zoning ordinance to allow a five-foot front yard setback in lieu of the required 25-foot setback at 1910 South Concho Drive should be denied. And with any, with that, are there any questions?
Why are they wanting it?
Pardon?
Why are they wanting it? Is this new construction?
They are wanting to build a carport extension out from the garage. It would have, their plans indicate that it will have the same pitch as the roof of the garage. It will extend out so that they can park their vehicles under that carport.
With no activities taken place as of the moment?
Pardon?
No construction has taken place?
No, no, no. They have coming forward.
They're doing it the right way. They're asking permission first.
They're asking permission, yeah.
Instead of doing it, then asking permission.
Unlike others, yes.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Any questions?
Do they have any pictures of the plans or mock of what it would look like from architect?
They had submitted one, but it, it did not really have the dimensions on it. They did have the roof pitch, and that was the most important thing that's following the ordinance. But other than that, it, it was hard to visualize it. It was not attached to the garage. It was separate.
It's separate?
But this will be attached to the garage, but as it was demonstrated in the plan, it was not.
Are there any others out there? Did you say?
There are some other carports, yes, most of them. All that we could see as I drove up and down appeared to have met the 25 foot, and when I scale it off of the map, they have met the 25 feet.
So they're 25 foot setback?
Right.
On the existing ones out there? So there's not another carport?
I did not find one, no. Now, I do know there is another submittal that is coming forward, and I have not looked at it. But as of this date, I do not believe there's another one that doesn't meet.
So we're here to open or close the door?
Sort of.
What was, what was, what was the opposition? How many opposition? How many?
No, there was one in favor and none opposed.
Only one in favor and none opposed.
You said there's another one coming forward, same street, same neighborhood, same area?
Pardon?
Is that the one that you mentioned that's coming forward?
Right.
Same street, same block, same area?
Yes.
Okay, right.
Any questions? Terry?
Yes, sir.
Bobby? Nope, nope, nope. Any questions?
The applicant is here and would like to address the board.
Thank you, Sherri. Time for public comment. State your name for the record, please.
My name is Beth Lee.
Hi, Beth.
And I'm Sammy Lee.
Hi, Sammy.
On the, well, first of all, on the drawing that was submitted, there were dimensions written on the drawing for the height, the, the width and the length of the carport that we're proposing. It is, to us, a hardship in that when, when you look at the home, it does appear that it has a big, nice two-car garage, and it does not. The previous owners had built this on to the existing home, and in doing that, you have less than half of one side you cannot use. And I do have pictures for a garage. It, it was basically used for a workout area for the previous owners, and you have one side that you could put a car in. It's a little longer. It, it goes back a little further. So to be able to protect our property, our vehicle's property, and to not give any obstruction of view from the road, from neighbors being able to see out of their yard and down the road on either side, this would not give any obstruction to because it is all open on all sides with the exception of a cover for the roof.
It is already an existing driveway all the way to the right of way. And so all we're doing is welding on some plates and making it just exactly like pre-existing roof, matching roof, everything. So it would, I mean, and of course, our neighbor has done the same thing on his side, except his house is already far enough back, and ours was pre-existing that it's already there. Everybody's gates out there where ours, where we'll drive in, their gates are right at the property line. I mean, you know, they're automated gates. Ours would be open where people could get in and out. Also, for handicap reasons, that would, I mean, be a big plus to have covered parking, you know, get out of rain, people in wheelchairs. I'm 62. I'm not going to be, you know, surprise a chicken forever, and that'll be our last one.
How long beyond the property?
I'm sorry?
How long?
We bought it in July.
Yes, sir.
And we're still renovating and doing the inside interior at the, at the present.
Not renovating. We're just doing paint and floor, you know, replace the floors.
Renovating the inside.
Yeah, well, that sounds different.
We got pictures too, if you'd like to.
If you don't mind, I can pass around pictures so you can all see them.
Please do, please do.
Let me explain to them what they're looking at. That is, the yellow line is the property line. That's where the overhang will be. It'll be nine foot away. There's the garage where they built in, to where you can only park on that side. That's from the garage to there is 27 feet. Where we'll have nine foot is the calculation.
We're asking for eight.
There's trees outside of where we're going to have our carport. Big old woke trees.
Mr. Lee, let me interrupt.
And then that's.
You're, you're, he's probably already seen all that. He's, he's part of staff, and we're the board's members.
Actually, these are pictures I took today and brought to you.
Oh, today, okay.
So nobody has seen these. Yeah, that's why I thought.
He doesn't have a vote. Let me put it.
Okay, well, we can't do that then.
And if you have questions, as we pass them around, ask us, and we'll tell you what you're looking at.
We have from the, the current roof where we tie in, it would be to the, the end of the structure would be 18 feet. So we're not asking for, we have 27 feet, and you can see in the picture where I measured, and I even took pictures of the tape measure so you could see to the end of that line that shows it's 27 feet. So we're, we're looking at nine feet really away from the property line towards the house.
Nine feet.
You can picture that.
So I know generally in that area, there is that right of way kind of comes off of the street.
Yes, sir.
A lot of individual park there on the side in front of houses.
Yes, ma'am.
And they tend to do that a lot.
And then people walk outside.
Right. Is that?
That doesn't encroach on that. That's nine feet inside our property line where it would, our, our structure would stop. Does that make sense?
Nine feet inside that easement, I bet you're talking about.
I've got a, on one of those drawings, if you'd like for me to point it out, I can, I can kind of show you where that would be. And to the, there's a picture of the driveway that shows, that says 27 feet on it that's written out. There, it shows the next door neighbor's fence line and kind of where the end of the carport would be in relation to that and the property line.
The picture that is up on the screen right now is a good example. If we had a carport there, and you just bring it on out existing, you can see Ross's trailer there, and then his pickup. Well, take his pickup out of the picture, and you'll see about where the carport's going to come out to. It would cover the trailer. So I mean, it would be well back away from everything that we're talking about.
This isn't any kind of overlay zone situation? It's a nasty word called carport.
I'm sorry?
It's a nasty word called carport if you're not in the overlay zone, and you're the first ones to request one, and so that's what we're running into.
So covered parking space?
Yeah. Can you change it?
Handicap area, you know, you can say it a bunch of different ways.
Well, I'm sure staff has tried to work diligently and helping try to figure it out, but to help you. Like I said, it's the first, it's the first one. We, we'll be opening a door for everyone else out there, and it's, it's got to be under an overlay zone to carports and different things.
When you talk about a person that's tired of dealing with carports, you're looking at him. And, you know, and I'm definitely. But how many have, that's a new way to circumstance with half a, half a garage.
I know.
It's, that is unique to this.
Do you have any way to, on your lot there, is it big enough where you can do something with, get around to the backyard?
It's too thin.
Too thin?
Yes, sir.
It's all, really?
It's all.
Okay. And my next, that was my, one of my questions as well. My next question is, I know you have 27 feet aimed out here.
Yes, ma'am.
But that's, is that the dimension of what the, that's just what you're telling us, how long it is?
That's just, I'm showing you how long our driveway that's existing is there from the garage, and I'm telling you the, the carpet would come out 18 feet from the house. Yes, ma'am. And that is on the dimensions on the drawing that was presented. It is not on, well, it is on there.
So basically to here.
This is showing, yes, ma'am. If you went up straight across, and then this is showing the tape measures to the last beam of the 18 foot, and then this would be, of course, you have an overhang, you know, just like on a house. So about two, less than two feet overhang, which is not the structure part necessarily that's.
Right, right. Where it comes from the beam.
It's just the roof. Yes, ma'am. And then this was kind of showing where the tree line is and across, so you could see how, you know, it comes quite a ways into the property line from the easement. The easement's way over here, I think. You can see it better.
Here.
Yes, ma'am. This is the opposite side of the road or of the driveway. This is so left and right.
To the left of that?
Basically, yes, ma'am. And that was just to give you a dimension.
Okay.
Because this is our, our driveway is all the way up to here. Now, my understanding was, we still have a little bit past the driveway for our property line, that that did not go all the way to the property line. When we bought it, my understanding was it was on the other side of this tree.
Your survey?
It will show you on the survey.
So.
So 18 feet is what you're requesting basically to come up with.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. And of course, the, the actual structure, construction would be similar like to the home itself.
Thank you.
More questions?
We do have, if you need to have questions, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, go ahead.
Our builder is here. If you did have any more questions about the actual structure.
Okay. Thank you.
I can't remember. There's HOA out there.
Yes.
Did you already get that approved?
We did get it approved with HOA, and they actually directed us to you guys to make sure that we could get it approved with y'all.
Most of their stuff's in the rear.
Okay. We did go to them first to make sure that there wasn't going to be an issue, and they said that, that they did not have an issue with it at all. We showed them the drawings and, and everything, and went over dimensions.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any more questions? The applicant?
I don't think so.
There being none, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's talk about it. Board comments on this? Any? If there's not any comments, I need a motion. Glad I don't have to make the motion. Can you talk about it some more? Somebody say something.
I don't want to open us up to.
Yeah, that's the problem, yeah.
But I also understand by the looks of that garage, there is nowhere to park.
Yeah.
In one area, and that is undue to their own fault when they purchased the house. It's not actually usable or livable space for that specific usage. That's a downfall, but I understand it was a pretty place for me. Well, I'm kind of.
Any more comments?
If it was in the overlay zone, maybe Sherri, would it still be encroaching? It's still too close if, just for giggles?
If it was in the overlay zone, then they wouldn't have needed to come here.
They would not have.
It would have had the five-foot.
It would have.
Front yard setback, yes.
Because their house is specifically set at the exact 25-foot setback right now, so nothing can ever really be added on to it without.
Right, not in the front. That's correct.
So what's the process after this if we deny it? Planning or council, or is there more steps?
They could appeal it. Actually, since you are the quasi-judicial, the next step would be to go to court.
Bypass counsel?
Yes.
This is as quiet as my boards ever been. Does it matter? Well, you said it. Terry, you're being quiet.
I am being quiet. I, I agree with what was said about the, you know, the, the garage is too small unless you get a really small, compact car to fit in there. It's pretty small. The bad thing was that the previous owners added that on, and then it, it's just opening. We just recently went through a whole neighborhood that are coming forward with carport issues, and so we're going through that. And then today, we're listening to yours. So it's like it's added on. It's a different, it's a whole different neighborhood, and it's an eye-opener. So it's a dilemma.
Do we know why they are not in the overlay? I don't believe.
I don't believe any of the, the area out by the lake is included in the overlay zone.
Okay. Don? Pearls of wisdom?
I don't have any pearls of wisdom. I understand the, the desire, and I understand the want. I also understand that the code says no. And, and we've approved a lot of two-foot setbacks, or, you know, two-foot variances, and we've, we've approved some, I don't know, seven-foot variances, but I, I don't recall ever approving a 25-foot variance that would cover the entire thing. And that's just, in my mind, the, the spirit of a zoning law is that that's, that's the numbers that have been approved.
I don't think we're actually, they weren't asking for 25 feet. I think they were asking for 10 feet setback, right? Am I missing?
No, it's like 25.
Five-foot setback.
No, they're not, it's, yeah, that's the general, it's already 25. Like, that's our basis is 25. And then they want to build 18 feet out from that, so then the.
So they'll only have a seven foot rather than a 25-foot setback, correct?
Nine-foot setback is what we're looking at.
Yeah, rather than, rather than the 25 that, that.
Correct.
The zoning rule says we want to cut it all the way down to seven to nine feet.
Sorry, I misunderstood your statement. I thought we were saying that we approved 10 footers and stuff like that, and now we're trying to approve a 25-foot setback. I misunderstood.
Well, I probably said it backwards, but that's the gist of what I'm trying to say, yes.
I was like, no, we're not trying to.
Commissioner, 25.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
As you know, there were two other cases that came, what, two months ago, and those are still pending, as y'all took, I think, a tabled action on those. We are going to have a discussion at the planning commission about the open structure overlay, particularly in that one neighborhood, but if that's something they're interested in, the real discussion is with city council of carports in general, is do we need certain setbacks for these open-structured carports in all of our town or certain areas? That does not necessarily help these folks move forward quickly here, but that's something that we would need to get city councils decisions on of, do they see, as Commissioner Barnhart pointed out, we have a 25 feet for some reason at some point in our history, does that need to change for carports or not? And I think y'all, a few months ago, said, well, in that particular neighborhood, hey, maybe we need to reevaluate that. I don't know if that means maybe we do that at the lake, because those are usually older homes, not all. There's definitely some new homes, but there are situations like this that there's not room to get around to put parking in the back because there's just no room to get back there.
I think it definitely opens up the possibility to see what city council does before just shutting it down and then it changing afterwards if something were to change on a wider scale to table it.
Mr. and Mrs. Lee, did you understand what Mr. Vanoye said there about working, they're trying to work through a lot of this carport issue, and there's no guarantee either way on anything, but they're, it's on the, it's on the radar, so to speak. Would y'all like to tape, for us to table this? And y'all wait unless y'all got a favorable vote. I don't know, I don't know if I do or not. I don't know. I don't know. I, I hear it, I hear some things, and, but I don't know if we have a favorable vote.
I mean, I forget while, while we have.
We, we can move on. I mean, we can table it, or we can vote.
That's why we're here, that we have this extenuating circumstances from the garage, from where it was built, everything, and that's why.
He needs to come to the mic.
Okay.
He needs to come to the mic. Sorry, I'm really hard of hearing. It needs to be recorded. You have to go to the mic.
Yeah, I'm so sorry. We have to record it on, yeah, on record, and I'm sorry, I'm really, I'm really hard at hearing too.
Well, I'm telling you, that's why we're here.
Okay.
That's why we're here. I mean, yeah, there's a rule 25, but there's also this process. So we do have these extenuating circumstances from the way the garage was built, the way the house was built, all those things. I mean, where people have their trees to their entrances, to their gates, we're talking setback nine feet from what, they have more obstruction than we, what we're talking about. And it's going to be open, it's going to be, our neighbors, they welcome it. We've talked to them. That's probably one of the guys that sent in, one of them, that said, yeah, please do. HOA said, yeah. HOA said, yeah, not a problem, send it in. So that's what we're here in good faith, that, hey, we can get this rectified and let's move on. But if we need to wait, we can do that too. It's just, I mean, to us, it's a no-brainer that for all instances, that it ought to go through. I mean, there's no other way around it. But for us to have ample parking, for handicapped people, for my dad being 89, that I had to take off a wrench, it lives at Baptist Memorial. If it's raining, there's no way, I mean, can't get him out. We're going to sit in the driveway until, and of course, it doesn't rain a lot here. Yeah, I understand it, but if it is, we got problems. And so, you know, things of that nature, and that's the only reason why we're here. If it was one of those setback houses and we wanted to go all the way, no, I get that. You can't do that. But we're not in that instance, so that's why we're here, okay?
Thank you, sir.
One option y'all may want to consider as you go forward with this whole topic is, as you have neighborhoods such as this where you don't have these existing. It'd be a little bit easier for y'all to process or define an area if a neighborhood came forward and said, you know, these few blocks, we all agree as neighbors, and we would like to petition for these to be added. So that may be an option for y'all to look at, and even in this case, if you define a space where all the neighbors agree, and then they ask the city to do that, then the neighborhood has agreed, and it's not just one.
Right.
Anyway, this is going to be ongoing, like you said, so defining some sort of process might help.
I believe this is the first one where we're actually breaking ground on our neighborhood, it was the first one in the neighborhood like that, so.
And it does benefit them, and they don't have any opposing to it, but we are opening ourselves up to it. But at the same time, like you said, if everyone is in agreement to it, it's also obviously can, hopefully would be built, you know, in conjunction with the home and not something that would be an eyesore, that would devalue the property.
Which raises your property taxes, which we don't appreciate.
You probably don't want to go down that rabbit trail, or rabbit hole, yeah.
But the commissioner's right. You can put conditions on it if that's something that you choose to do in approval, that you have certain conditions, and those conditions could be, they meet the current open structure overlay requirements, which is to come similar to that gable roof and to have the same type of materials that match the house and the roof materials, which I believe is their proposal anyway, but you can have those conditions if you do seek approval for this variance.
I did notice where, when city was asking or saying if we did approve it, that you were also requesting that they pave. Are you asking them to pave the right-of-way?
No, no, we are not asking them to pave the right-of-way. But if there was any area down to their property line, that's a unique area out there in that the right-of-way, a portion of that right-of-way is not paved, and they happen to be on the side that has a larger unpaved right-of-way. But as long as they have it paved to their property line, that was.
How large is what, the right-of-way?
Seven feet, nine feet. Yeah.
Nine feet?
I think it's 90.
90 feet.
Okay.
What it said originally. I think this two right-of-ways, 90 paving is 40.
The existing right-of-way out there is 90-foot wide. The paving is 40 feet, but it's skewed to one side, a little more to one side than the other. And what's required is only 70 feet, but with a paving of 48 feet.
What is this particular right-of-way for the applicants? Do we know?
They're right there.
Sherri, could you go back one image? And I just want everyone to, just to clarify with Sherri, with Ms. Bailey, is that it's, she's just talking about the driveway. She's not talking about that entire frontage?
Right. Just on their property.
Right.
Just that the driveway meets the road?
Yes.
So does it touch now?
Do you know, Mr. Lee, can you step back up? I got a question. Please, sir, thank you. Do you know the right-of-way width?
The width?
Yeah, between where your property line starts or ends there at the front and where the pavement begins? The answer, no, sir, not exact, not down to the footage an inch, no, sir. Ross, do you, by chance?
Is the city recommending this repute?
I don't know.
Mr. Lee, I know you haven't been out there for very long. You said you just purchased the property in July. Those properties to the south or to the north, from the pavement edge to their driveways, is it concrete or gravel, or do you?
Depends on which one you go by.
It just depends on which one. I was trying to look at that last image they had up to see if it had what the material was.
If you look at that picture, at one time, they built all the houses in a row.
Yes, sir.
Straight, and of course, the street.
In the street, right.
And we just got caught on that curb, of course, like she had stated. And they built it out, and so that's part of the reason, but that means nothing to y'all guys. It's not y'all's problem. It's not our problem. That's the way it would, the problem is parking there, and we don't have it.
Right.
And so that's what we're trying to do, less offensive, the best way we can tie it into the house and make it as professional, best looking we can, and that's what we're trying to do. I mean, like I said, the neighbor to the south of us, he built, of course, he's 25 feet away though, because this house sets back. It's all very, very well done, except for that one, because the answer to your question, I don't know.
Do you know when the home was built?
1967, but.
That was out in the country. That wasn't, it was not in the city area.
There is insulators that Ross has found, so that means that that was probably out there when that was a river, before the lake was actually there, there's actual, because that's from telegraph days. So you're looking twenties, thirties, when electricity first came along.
LBJ was around.
Sir, can you move up a little bit closer to the microphone?
I thought I was loud enough everybody could hear, I'm sorry. So it was in twenties, thirties that the existing structure was there, is actually on the rolls in 1967. What they did to the actual garage, as far as I can find, was 1984. Before Mr. Sands, who I bought it from, he bought it in 1987. So sort of the history behind it has been pieced together, and like a lot of lake houses are, you know, through different owners. But again, it's nothing that we did, nothing that we wanted to do. I would love not to have a carport. I mean, it's at an expense to me, but at the same time, we need it. We really, for our family and our dynamics and everything about it, we really need one. So that's why we're here.
And here we are.
From the road, from the road to the driveway itself?
Yes, to the.
About 25 feet.
From the road, from the pavement to the concrete, it's 25 feet.
Because the thing about the truck's park right there, the truck's 21 feet, I still have a good three feet.
Oh, yeah, that's very true.
I was saying that's the right-of-way.
Concrete to the, actual roadway is 25 feet. Property line.
So that would be 25-foot that you would have to pave or concrete to go to your.
So from the concrete?
For the right-of-way.
And nobody else out there is?
I don't know.
I do. A few do.
Did you get a survey when you purchased the home?
I'm sorry?
A survey when you purchased the home?
Well, we had an inspected width. We had a.
No survey?
Of course, Rocky Spence put it all together for us.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, here we go. Discussion, board?
Sherri, were there any homes to the left of, you know, 1921 to 1931, are there existing structures there? They park from Concho, correct? Do they pull in, are there structures there?
Yeah, there are other structures.
There's one, one structure that has three homes, and then.
It looks like there was a structure at 1933.
I think that's new, isn't that new construction?
Over there in that, isn't that Lake Shore?
Yes, Lake Shore.
That's Lake Shore.
Yeah.
And there are a couple, well, at least one other one further up, yeah. And they all have further setbacks.
And I believe most of those actually have their drive access, not on South Concho Drive. They're on the other road that faces them.
So their driveways.
Correct. I don't believe any of their driveways go to South Concho.
Okay.
Whatever those other streets are. I think it's Aspen and something else over there.
Okay, board, let's move on. Let's hear a motion. Applicants say they want to vote.
I'll make a motion. I'll surprise everybody.
I make a motion that we approve as written with the provision that the structure meets the requirements of pitch similarity, et cetera, to the existing garage.
Sherri, can you put the four things that need to happen with this, the four requirements?
Yes, please.
Yeah.
Think that the city recommended?
The ones in your staff report, I don't have that on the slide.
Okay.
You're still recommending that, though, to go with?
They're very simple, that it.
So our question is number one, and it says the driveway access needs to be paved to the right-of-way property line to the city's specifications. And the Lees are saying it's 25-foot from their driveway to, from their property line driveway to the right-of-way.
So are you asking that they pave an additional 25 feet?
No, to the right-of-way property line, right-of-way where it meets their property line.
Basically to where the Colici is on the right-of-way.
Right, that little area. That's how the ordinance is working.
Any more discussion on the motion?
I, too, will step out on a limb and second that.
Motion to approve with it. All right, y'all ready for the vote? All in favor, say aye? Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Six, one in favor to the applicants. Good luck.
Would work hand in hand with her?
Permit department, I would imagine.
Yeah, yes, you bet.
Building official. Thank y'all. Thank you for hearing us.
Are we dismissed?
You can leave. Yeah, you can stay if you want to.
I got to go say it sometime.
Okay, moving on.
Thank y'all.
Item number five, ZBA 23-30-26-09 A&M Circle, single member district number five, Karen Hesse. Request for a variance from zoning code section 406A.4, which requires 500 feet from the lot line of one short-term rental to another short-term rental in the Santa Rita neighborhood.
It's actually the ASU neighborhood, ASU College Hills.
Is this College Hills?
Yeah.
Okay, the College Hills neighborhood.
Ray Lineberry Planner, and this is a short-term, or applying to be a short-term rental, but it is within 500 feet of another. It is in District Five, Karen Hesse Smith, and the neighborhood is ASU College Hills.
ASU?
Yes, ASU College Hills neighborhood.
Okay.
There were 14 notifications mailed out. We received two in favor and three opposed. One of the oppositions I passed out to you. They are not in favor of the granting of variance for the short-term rental, not so much just the short-term rental, but actual variance. In their mind, city council set a feat, and they think you should stick with it. And based on this map, the one in green is the applicant. If you do property line to property line, it is 493 feet. If you do along the road, it is 606 feet. The variance request relates to the two short-term rentals being within the 500 feet. It is an existing lot and home. The applicant believes their request is in keeping with the development of the homes. And this action is the minimum that will meet the needs and does not adversely affect others. If the variance is granted, the use of the land would not be contrary to public interest. And staff does not have a recommendation, but if the board does vote to approve, then we do ask for the condition that they obtain a conditional use from planning commission. With that, is there any questions?
Any questions for Ray?
Has there been any official word on measuring direct versus street?
So we did have a discussion with planning commission last month. They are wanting to keep a distance of 500 feet, and their request is to make it not variable by you guys. So there is the want to keep this 500 feet there.
Property line to property line, or just?
Property line to property line. They do not want it measured by street.
Okay, thank you.
But we are bringing it back again this month for further discussion.
And this individual, do we know, has he owned the property? Did he just purchase the property?
He owns the property.
In expectation that it was on a map and it was already available?
He actually owns the two with the green stars. He owns both properties.
Oh, he, okay.
Correct.
Okay, he lives next door, I'm guessing. Okay.
I can't read those numbers. Is one of them 2601?
2615.
The one with the red star, right there.
I got it.
It's 2601.
Thank you.
Right next door.
Jeez, little corner.
I don't know which is worse, carports or?
I think you took a word right out of my mouth. Airbnbs and carports, going in my grave, I think.
So with the planning saying they want to leave it like it is, does that not move up to council to discuss?
Yes.
We'd also mention the time limit for the year?
So once planning commission agrees with the way we have it amended, it will be taken to city council.
Yeah, so they basically gave staff direction on what they wanted, which is basically what she said. It's as the crow flies and it's so forth, but they wanted to see that back in writing, staff to put that in writing, bring it back at their next meeting, and then they would review it to make sure it was exactly the wording they said, and then it will go to council.
It is as the crow flies?
Not as the squirrel runs, but.
That, what about the time of the year that we allow? Was that brought up?
I'm sorry?
The year permit for them to turn them into an Airbnb, was that brought up at all during the discussion?
We had discussions. As far as coming into, quote, compliance of actually actively doing something.
Yes, yes.
We've had some other discussions about that, and we're going to get some more feedback on that.
Okay.
Because there, we do know there are a few properties, or at least one known property, that kind of, hey, we're going to apply for it, but not actively be in an short-term rental.
Okay, so it is on the radar and discussion?
It is, yes.
All right.
So this one, if you measured to the middle of the front, then you'd have the 500 feet, and we wouldn't be here today.
If you move it down just like, just a tiny, tiny.
If they gave up seven feet of their front yard, they wouldn't be here today.
Originally, when I first did it, I was like, this is 502. Originally, when I first did it, I was like, this is 502, why are we doing this? But I was not at the very, very tip corner.
And really, to be quite honest, as you look at these short-term rentals, the whole, I mean, we need to find something, whatever that is, and stick with it.
Yes.
Because it starts causing a lot of issues for staff. They have got things, well, if this, then that, then this one, if this, then that. So you've got to find something, whatever that is, and stick with it. Is the only way this is going to be manageable.
Right. We had been told that it was going back for new rules and, and going to the city council with, you know, a lot of things changing. And one of those that we were told a couple of months ago, or last month even, was that it was a possibility that there would be no area between. Like, it could be a whole row of them or street or whatever.
That's what we tried last month, was to remove it.
Discussion on that, you know, whether the state was going to step in and all of those kind of things. But at this point, you know, what, going on what the Planning Commission is recommending, which is the best we can tell you of what is going to be referred to staff. And I think what Ray has told y'all is pretty accurate as far as what they're going to, they just want to read it in writing at their next meeting, and then it goes to council from there.
Good.
So they're really going toward, you know, get a process and there's no variance. This is, this is, you know, what it is, which is where we have to go to make this even manageable.
Right.
So then that kind of eliminates the huge garage door we opened with all of these applicants that are 493 feet.
I mean, ideally, no distance would be the easiest for us because it, you know, it's just easier. But if you're going to have one, then find it and stick with it.
But the change is as a crow flies. Right, okay. Not a squirrel. The, the street was the squirrel, right?
But the last ones we've heard, it was all they were told, yes, yes, yes. And then in their final thing, they all of a sudden got a phone call.
Planning Commission denied.
I don't think this one falls under the same circumstances.
I agree. So that's why I feel like we're running in circles a little bit.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I can understand if they've been told yes 15 times by the city and then all of a sudden there's one that nobody knew about pops up.
I guess my next question would be.
That's probably been straightened out, I would hope, on the maps.
Also, okay, whenever a new applicant comes to light, same thing when we had these applicants that we voted on the last time and we actually approved of them, they went to planning, is my understanding, I think they were all denied? Is that correct?
Yes.
They're all denied?
Yes.
So if they are appro, or they appeal up or apply again moving forward, because they already came to us, they were approved, there's, are they still up at the forefront?
Have to wait.
They have to wait a whole nother year?
Well, Brandon, you found that?
Yeah, so if they were denied at Planning Commission, they can still appeal to council. And then once city council makes a decision, yeah, there is a rehearing exception. And, I mean, normally it's 12 months. You can't hear the same case for 12 months. But then there are some exceptions, like if the zoning classification of surrounding properties would change and that would have changed the decision, then they could request a rehearing from Planning Commission in a scenario like that.
But.
Earlier than the 12 months.
But during that time of the appeal, if another applicant is to come in and apply for that same area of that 500 foot, is it bumping the one that's in the appeal process out because they've already technically been denied by planning?
Whoever gets it first wins.
I, I would say they need to appeal to planning, or to council. And if they get approved at council, then it relates back to their original application.
So whoever's approved first gets to.
But that's part of the problem, seeing that it's being created by variances and other things. Find what it is. This, this process is just causing more issues.
Right, chaos.
Is this, one, just going back, banner back and forth, is that the one where the maps were messed up?
Yes.
Okay, okay. That's unusual circumstance on that one. The rules we're under now is the crow flies or as a squirrel runs? Crow flies?
Property line to property line across the nearest point.
Okay.
It's going to get denied.
I don't see much truth. Denied. Only, only thing you can do is change the rules. Yep. Put them to as a squirrel. All right. Thank you, Ray. Do we have a public comment? Yes, sir. Step up to the microphone and state your name for the record. Come on up.
Tell me to go to work.
Yeah.
All you four right there?
Two over here. Yes, sir.
And then two over here, thank you, I'm sorry. And what is the Planning Commission that y'all are talking about?
What was, what was the question, sir?
What is the Planning Commission that y'all are speaking about?
The Planning Commission is the board that helps set zoning classifications for our city. This board here hears variances to those zoning classifications.
Okay, so when these people, okay, I got another question.
Go right ahead. State your name. Please serve for the record.
Can you state your name?
Oh, my name's Thorne Campbell.
Welcome, Mr. Campbell.
Who applied. I actually had a, I don't know what happened. I gave envelopes to three people that said they were going to approve. I don't know how they didn't get, well, the time was so short. It might be in the mail for it, as far as I know. Anyway, I would point out that the two properties most, if you go back to the approval and, and disapproval, or whatever that was, opposed. Yeah, the two properties most affected. I think neither one of, oh, well. Yeah, neither one of them made a decision. Well, two of the three most, most affected did not, did not do one or the other. I didn't get a chance to talk to them. Well, I did talk to one of them and she understood perfectly, but she chose not to favor or oppose. I was under the understanding that there's already been an approval. I don't know if it's true or not for a, within 500 foot for this same property going the other direction. Is that, is that not true or?
So the property, let me go back. So this, this property that it is within 500 feet of?
Yeah.
This is the same property that the Princeton one that you did approve?
The first time, or like two months ago?
Yeah.
Right?
Where is the Princeton one at? Can you tell me?
It is up here.
It's not showing up on the zoning?
Yeah, it is, it is up here.
Oh, okay.
So.
I can tell by looking on the website, well, you know, the community benefits from these, especially the Angelo State community, by having cheap places close to Angelo State where families can come to events for their students, with their students, and stay short-term and even have their students there. So there is a, a real community benefit to these short-term rentals. But I would say that as far as I can tell, the one I'm close to has never gone to the next step, applied for, they got the conditional use and that's all they did, if I understand correctly. And looking at the Princeton one, I can find nowhere where they're renting it either. So I'm not even sure they've gone to the next step. I know that they're not showing up on the planning map. I know that. As far as I know, there's only one in this whole neighborhood that is actually doing short-term rental. It's on A&M over there, close to Avenue N. I don't know of any other ones in the neighborhood. I mean, y'all should be able to tell who has applied for occupation, certificate of applications. And I don't, and I don't think that property has, nor has the Princeton one. I don't see, if that property has done it, they're breaking the law. Because they're not.
The Princeton one you guys just approved, they got approval, so they're in the process right now of doing their change of occupancy. The one that is within 500 feet from him on Baylor has applied for their condition, their change of occupancy, but they have not finished it.
Okay, okay.
But they are up for renewal next month.
Up for renewal next month?
They are.
So this, I'm doing the variance to get a head start. I found out there were so many people applying. I thought, I better go into the variance, so I won't have to worry about it. But now, if they don't apply next month, I'll be back to see y'all in January.
That's right.
So, or if they, if you do grant the variance, I'll be back in January, I guess. Whenever the next time it is, your meeting is. I don't know. I'm sorry, my brain doesn't do dates well.
I got a question for you, sir. How long have you owned the home?
Well, I've owned that home for 15 years or so.
All right.
Yeah, I'm the third owner of it.
Okay.
Yeah, after the Clemmons, Augustus Clemmons, the wine guy in the newspaper. Yeah, that's who I borrowed from and own the other house.
So if the folks, staff, if the folks on the, over there don't, do not follow through and they want to renew their permit or permission to extend their, their time, what are the rules on that?
So it's, it will be, if they apply to renew their conditional use, it will go to Planning Commission and Planning Commission will then have the decision of, do they renew it or not?
How often does that happen? I mean, renewal? Extend?
This will be the first one being brought to them that has not finished their CO.
Are they working on their CO? Can you tell?
Last I looked, they applied for their CO a few months ago and it has, I don't know the reason why it has sat there.
So when you, I'm sorry, can I ask a question too?
Yeah, go right ahead, sir.
When they apply, did they have to pay a fee?
No, not for the, you pay the fee once everything's approved and you actually get it.
So they could apply without any cost to themselves?
Correct.
Okay. And, and I can too.
Not.
And.
Not for the short-term rental, though.
Yeah, not for.
For the occupancy.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, they had to pay the $150 fee for the.
The Planning Commission.
The conditional use.
Yes.
That's why, I'm sorry. Yeah, so.
So, yes, if they do, if the Baylor one does not come back for renewal by December.
I'll be back, I'll be back in January.
Then it will, this is not needed and he is able to get a, or he will be able to apply for his conditional use.
And I'm doing this mainly so that I make sure I get it before somebody else jumps in front of me. That's exactly why I'm doing that. Because I don't believe they are, their, their weeds were way high until last week. The yard was overgrown. I hadn't seen by now. Somebody mowed it last week. I think it's the, I think it's a young couple that owns it and I don't think they're going to. I think that actually, the neighbor that lives between us told me she thought it was rented. So it might have been rented from, it might be rented right now. I don't know. So I've always had my house, one of my houses or two, we've lived in one and moved the other one and rented one or the other. Always. Since we pretty much own both of them for.
All right, sir.
I don't know, we love the neighbor, we love being there. Love my neighbors too. I'm, I'm fine with them opposing. I'm perfectly happy. If they don't want it, then they don't want it.
I think you've covered it.
What?
I think you've covered it all.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I know, I can go on.
Yeah.
It's my brain.
Yeah.
It's my brain.
We'll have, we'll have a discussion here.
Talking to talking.
That's all right, sir.
You're good.
Thank you.
You gotta stop me from repeating myself too.
So if he moved to his other house, who wouldn't have this problem?
Correct. I hate to say it, we're just opening up, we're opening up doors and doors and doors.
Nothing's happening. There haven't been any of the rentals. All right, board, let's talk about it. Or make a motion? Yeah. Baylor's coming up next month.
To renew.
If we vote on it now, will he, well, if Baylor doesn't renew, he doesn't have to come through us.
Correct. That'd be that instance that Mr. Dyson was talking about, that a zoning in the area and the neighboring properties has changed would allow him to go straight to Planning Commission without a variance.
Right. What, what happens if three or four of the people in that neighborhood decide to do the same thing at the same time? How, how does that work out?
That's a great question. We're still trying to make sure.
We are still trying to work through that, but I mean, I think there's two ways to do it. Either the timing of the application or have Planning Commission consider all the ones that applied within that application period and determine which one's best for the neighborhood.
I see.
So I also want to point out that if this is, if this does get approved and they apply to go to Planning Commission in December, it will be brought forward the same time if Baylor renews at that time. So it will be the same meeting.
Would Baylor be brought first? Can you, I mean, how is that in their agenda? Because they have certain attendant.
Can I have one question?
You'll have to come to the front, sir, sorry.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So the one that is within 500 feet of you is up for?
Let me get over here, let me get over here.
Okay.
You said, okay, what you said, tell me what you said again.
The one that is within 500 feet of you?
Uh-huh.
Has to apply to renew by December.
Okay, yes.
And so if this gets approved and you also apply for a conditional use, you guys will be going to the same meeting.
Oh, oh, so the, the the conditional use renewal has to come here too?
To the Planning Commission.
No, to the Planning Commission.
To the Planning Commission.
If them, if they, if they approve this now, here, right now.
Then we're there, being at the same meeting?
Correct.
Okay, now we'll get ironed out, that's what you're saying. But, okay, the Planning Commission, y'all told me, are they paid professionals? Are they, are they?
They are citizens of the city.
Just like here.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Citizens who sit and, and they, they are really responsible for the zoning?
Correct.
Creating the zoning?
Correct.
And this one's responsible for?
Keeping those zoning.
Keeping the zoning, okay. All right, thank you.
I mean.
I guess my next question, you said that the CO had been applied for, but it has not been issued? Is that on Baylor?
The last I checked, and that was about two weeks ago.
Any more insight into why or not or?
The last I heard from them, they were still doing renovations and they were not ready for their inspections.
Who applied for the CO? They did?
Correct.
Recently, like in the last month?
No, like three months ago.
Okay. Why would they apply for the CO if they weren't ready?
I can't answer that question.
Is that, is that the way that it's done? I don't know.
They may not have understood what all would be looked at, so they went ahead and applied.
That's been one of our learning curves. The ordinance says they, they must get a change of occupancy. Well, under the building code, that means usually a very specific thing, but you're really going from a residence to a residence, so there's really not a lot of changes. In this case, they chose to do some renovations and then that changes what the, what the inspections are. And so that pushed that change of occupancy down the road. Now, and so that, they chose to do renovations that triggered, you know, required a building permit.
Okay.
Had they not, they could have just done the change of occupancy and gone through the inspections process. Somebody may have said, oh, you need to change this, put a fire extinguisher here, put a smoke detector here and moved on. But they're in that renovation process, so that delays their change of occupancy until their renovations are complete and they pass their inspections. That's one of the challenges with short-term rentals of when we, as a local jurisdiction, put that you must get a change of occupancy in there. Most places don't do that. That was just another step for the STRs to have some oversight.
Right.
From the, from the local jurisdiction.
Right. It's a quasi-commercial, yeah, residential commercial. Charlie, do, have, there's been, has there been any update on the inspection process for this particular property on Baylor?
It's only good for six months.
Okay. Thank you. Well, my questions are answered.
But it's just we're going to keep putting people in line and keep putting people in line.
They won't need a condition if they, if they don't show up. He doesn't need a condition.
I can just, there's a 500 foot thing and that's what they're going to base it on, so we just stick to 500 feet. Because we're just innovating ourselves with these 490, 490.
Hey, guys, we got to talk into the mic so the recording can.
Mainly. I just feel like we've opened a door and we're continuing to open that door to where we're just getting these, if it's 500 feet and then there's someone else that's going to be paying to go to another committee and that 500 foot is set in precedence, and then they go to the next one and it's still the 500 feet. It's either establishing another longer wait that someone's basing money on, redoing something, and then it doesn't get approved. something, and then it doesn't get approved regardless. And that's kinda like, that was my worry whenever we opened ourselves up to even be voting on these particular things, because we were under the impression that it was doing away with the, with the 500 feet. Obviously, doesn't sound like that's going to be happening. So, I just feel like we're, they're gonna just keep going through this and it's just gonna get shot down again.
Just to give an update on the Baylor, the Baylor property, looking at our plan review software, this is not our inspection software, but our plan review software, they did complete their plan review with an approved, so they're down to just the inspections.
When was that?
That was October the 23rd. Of this year. So, it's very possible that they would get their certificate of occupancy here soon.
So, then that brings up another question.
Okay, forget what I said.
No, no, I'm gonna go with what you said, and I'm gonna think, okay, it's gonna go up for renewal. So, normally, you have one year that you have a review up, so when they come in for renewal, are they gonna be, are they gonna be renewed for one year or two?
We have not fully completed the case, but our normal recommendation for those that have not been actively operating very long, we ask them to be re-reviewed in one year. It is up to the Planning Commission. They have the jurisdiction to say, no, let's give them two years or one year, but city staff normally ask for that to be one year.
Thank you.
Got any more discussion? Need to hear a motion if they're in. More discussion on it.
Mr. Campbell, if you would move next door to your other house, I think you would be A-OK.
That's true. We like that, we like that.
Okay, well, just saying.
So, what would happen if it was denied and the Baylor did not renew? Could he, could he apply again?
Mm-hmm. Yes, he could apply for a conditional use because the zoning on the Baylor property would've changed from this having the conditional use zoning, it would go away.
So, he could go straight to planning?
That is correct.
Okay.
And if he gets the variance here, despite what happens with Baylor, I mean, they could still approve him because he has the variance, but...
That's one...
Concerns about that, but...
I don't think that's gonna happen.
I know it isn't gonna be popular, but I am gonna make a motion to deny. A second?
Okay, there's a motion to deny in a second. Ready for the vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Denied 7-0. Come see us in January, sir. Come see us again. Seven feet. Thank you.
I didn't have much more than to get my approval of people in there though, because I did have four people that mailed it in, two that they supported it, and then did not get on there. So, one week was not enough time. We told them to send letters.
We're missing the ordinance of the exact 500 feet, and if we're gonna make that goal, I think that we're all gonna try, or it's gonna be stuck to because it's just prolonging the inevitable to continue to go if it's not stuck at 500 feet.
Yeah, I understand that. I was just talking about that, how, one week, I had one week to get people to respond, you know? And of course, the people who are against it are gonna respond that week. It's gonna be hard. People who are not supportive, I had to talk into one week, and they, by the time they mailed it, it's too late, I probably got four letters coming to mail that. That's what I'm thinking, saying they want. You know, I consider having a longer time between sending out the letters and having them, that's what I'm saying. I don't understand it perfectly, I'm not mad about anything, but it was too short of a time between people receiving the letters and, and...
Well, thank you, we appreciate your time today.
Uh-huh, thank you.
All right, moving on. Public comment, item number six. Is public comment, issues or concerns not on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Citizens should speak from the podium, address all comments to Dyson, and begin by stating their name and address or single-member district number. Please limit all remarks to less than three minutes. Any public comment? There being none, item number, moving on to item number seven. Next meeting agenda, the next regular meeting of zoning board of adjustments is scheduled to begin at 1:30 PM on Monday, December the 4th, 2023, in the City Hall East Madison Meeting Room. Is there anything on the agenda so far? Do we? Two? Okay.
I'll let you guess.
Think I'll miss that one. Item number 10, adjournment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you, folks.